Sean?
Yes.
We'll try to work it back and forth. Is there something you need us to do? Just let us know and we'll try to do it from this end.
Okay, are we ready to go? Jay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, are we ready to go? This is six o'clock. I buy your.
Yes, just get started whenever you're ready. We're turning on.
And everybody can hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, very good. Good evening. This is the October 27th, 2022, regular meeting of the Yarmouth zoning board of appeals. We have four matters on our petition tonight. The first matter that we'll hear is Kingsway Trust, 64 King's Circuit, Yarmouth Port, Mass. It is in a zoning district of 40. The applicant seeks to modify an existing special permit, number 42823555 and 1321 per sections 102.2.1 and/or 104.3.2, subparagraph 4. Footnote, use table N6 used to allow unlimited play, unlimited public play on the Kingsway golf course. Do we have the petitioner?
Yes, we're all set. He's at the table.
I can't, I can't see you or I can't see anybody.
David Reed.
David, I can see you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name for the record and tell us about your petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Evening, I'm Attorney David Reed and I'm representing the Kingsway Trust before you tonight. We have several members of the, the trust and of the organization in the audience. I believe Mr. Peter Marinelli is here, who is the chairman of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Lee Rowley, who is the chairman of the Golf Task Force Committee, tasked to try and improve the operations of the golf course at the Kingsway, and Mr. Ken Howard, who is the representative of Arcane Management, which is the property managers for the entire facility. And again, there are several other members of the board and of the committee present this evening if you should have any questions. As you may know, and some of you were around when Kingsway was being developed and some probably were not. Kingsway is what's called an open space village development. That's a species of development which no longer exists under the bylaw as a separate entity. But in 1975, when it was being developed, it was allowable by special permit. And a very extensive and lengthy special permit was granted in 1975 for that use. For this to be a essentially self-contained community, largely self-contained. It has, it was originally designed to have 750 residential units, plus its own post office, restaurant, the 18-hole golf course that's before you tonight, its own septic treatment facilities and many other, what would otherwise be municipal facilities are all maintained and controlled by the trust itself. It was originally envisioned as a golf community, that the golf course would be the draw for the purchasers of the units. And when they purchased their units, they would also become members of the course and would be there to play golf. Because of that, the original special permit allowed the developers to build the golf course first, with the initial infrastructure before most of the residential units were built, let alone sold. And to allow that to happen, the board also granted a short-term or temporary variance to allow the golf course to be operated and available to the general public, even though a public golf course was not then allowed in the residential district. Over the years that, excuse me, that variance for public play in the private golf course has been extended and ultimately expired on December 31st, 2002. Since then, other than for some private memberships that were allowed to be purchased, it has operated exclusively as a golf course for the members and residents of Kingsway. In 2009, the trustees came before you and asked for permission to revive the public use option in order to supplement what was, what was becoming a dwindling product, that they could not sustain the operation of the golf course with just owner member playing time. And at that time, the zoning bylaw had been amended to allow public golf courses to be permitted in the residential district. No longer needing a special, I mean a variance, it only required a special permit at that time. And so in 2009, I believe Mr. Igo is still chairing, the special permit was granted for the public use as a supplemental activity to the private golf course, provided that the, the public use does not exceed 8,000 rounds per year. That was a number that was requested by the committee. I was not involved, so I don't know how they came up with that number, but that was the number that was established at that time. What we're asking for tonight is simply to remove that 8,000 round per year cap for non-owner, non-member play of the golf course. And the reason is essentially the same as the reason when they came before you in 2009. It's turned out that the business model for this development hasn't turned out to be sustainable, not as much as they had hoped. As I indicated, the, the number of units was actually significantly reduced from the originally envisioned 750. When it was at its peak, I'm told that there were approximately 400 resident members of the golf course, people who lived and owned in Kingsway, who were also active golfers in the golf course. Presently, there are only about 100 owner members who are operating this golf course. And there are also as many as 40 outside memberships, private memberships, if you will, public memberships, I should say, to, to run this golf course. That's significantly less, about a third of what was originally intended and operating in the early days of this golf course. The course is presently operated by a professional contractor, but because of the limits on play, in terms of people who are coming and playing golf and paying to play golf, it's operating at a deficit. And currently, the condominium association, the members who, whether they play golf or not, are subsidizing the operation of the course to the tune of about $360,000 per year. And that does not include capital expenses and accumulating obligations that need to be addressed in the near future. So the Golf Task Force Committee was formed by the trustees to try and come up with another solution. They have interviewed and discussed with other professional golf course operators, companies that operate courses like this at other locations, about coming in and becoming a new operator and trying to revive this course and generate some more business so that it can in fact remain viable for the benefit of the residents and the property in general. They've been told, the two companies that have currently met with them and given them preliminary proposals, that the public play cap that exists under the 2009 decision will be a serious impediment to any operator. That in order for a professional golf operation company to come in and staff this course for as, for annual use and to hire staff and personnel and to have a budget and to actually operate the course on an annual basis, they can't have this kind of a cap hanging over their heads. They're concerned, I presume, that if, for example, they were to book a wedding event or a corporate outing or even a simple group of four to play in the fall or the latter part of the year, how can they do that on a business basis when they might at any time realize that they exceed the 8,000 cap and can no longer honor those reservations? It just is not a viable business model for a company to come in and operate this course with that hanging over their head. Now, in fact, since 2009, the course has only exceeded the 8,000 round per year cap on one occasion. That was in the middle of COVID in 2020, when everybody was golfing because there was not much else they could do. We're not proposing any change to the physical structure, nor to the operation of the course, other than by eliminating the cap on outside play. We certainly hope and expect that a new operator will be able to generate more outside play and that be more, cut people coming to and from the course than there are currently. Because if they don't, we got a problem. We're not going to succeed in the effort that we're trying to achieve here tonight. The golf course has adjacent to it a parking lot of 101 parking spaces. Those spaces are shared by the, by the golf course as well as by the restaurant, which is in the same building. The golf course and parking lot for its facilities were, as I indicated before, originally designed for public play. That is to say, at the time the golf course parking lot facility was designed and sized, there were no residents in the property. It was all designed to accommodate public play until the residents, residences were built and sold out and then continue thereafter. According to my clients, there's never been a problem of the adequacy of that 101 space parking lot, right next to the parking lot. And in fact, if there ever were, there's quite a bit of other parking in the immediate vicinity by the post office and by the operating office and all around the area. But there has not been a problem. I also did some checking in terms of the potential traffic impact on Route 6A, which is the only entrance into and out of this facility for the public. I asked the Yarmouth Police Department for accident records that might tell us whether or not this was a problematic intersection and whether we needed to be concerned, but in increasing the traffic at the King's Circuit and Route 6A intersection. They provided me with a stack of 54 pages of traffic accident records stretching from January of 2017 to June of 2022, five and a half years of accident records. They did not, however, break it down to this intersection. Going through those 54 pages of accident records, I found exactly four that indicated that an accident had occurred at the intersection of King's Circuit and Route 6A. And of those four, none reported any personal injury. One was in late January and one was in late December. So those probably had absolutely nothing to do with the golf course operation. The point is, this is not a problematic intersection. The, the traffic on Route 6A is certainly busy. It is a busy road throughout the town. But this particular intersection has not proven to be problematic in terms of people coming and going from Kingsway. And I would keep in mind that throughout its operation, the first 14 years of the operation of the golf course was, had unlimited public play available to it. And for the last 13 years, since your 2009 decision, they've had almost unlimited public play, that is up to 8,000 rounds per year, in addition to the residents of the course. And during none of those times, has this proven to be a problematic intersection for traffic coming to or leaving from the Kingsway property. I was also able to find records from Cape Cod Commission for the traffic counts for Route 6A. They did not do any specifically at this intersection, but with their most recent data being in 2018, they did traffic counts at Setucket Road to the east of this intersection and at Union Street to the west. From those two, not being a traffic engineer, I can only give you general numbers, but they indicate that at peak hours, approximately 1,400 cars per hour pass through this stretch of road. That is the total of going both directions. There, there's no indication that that is in, that the site is inadequate or the road is inadequate to handle that amount of traffic. I would also observe, being a golfer, that golf courses generate a rather unique traffic flow. People do not just arrive in bunches as they may at a retail or commercial outlet. People come at a sign staggered times. They come when they're told to come and play, when they have a tee time to play, and they leave when they're done. So there are not large influxes at specific times for a golf course. It's a gradual, steady flow of traffic. I tried to come up with a few examples. If at peak times of the golf course, groups of four golfers, and that's the maximum for any tee time group, were to arrive about every 10 minutes, and if every one of them were an outside golfer, nobody from the, from the community, from the Kingsway community, all outside golfers, and if none of them carpooled and everybody came in their own car, that's a total of only about 24 cars per hour coming to this site. And in the afternoon, presumably 24 also leaving per hour. But even if all 48 cars in that example came and went in one peak hour, it's only about 3% of the traffic that currently exists on that road already. It's not a significant increase in traffic, and that's assuming basically worst-case scenario. That's assuming that nobody carpools and that everybody is coming from outside and nobody's going from the Kingsway course. So I really don't think that the traffic at Route 6A, coming to, to and from this site, should be of concern to us or to you in terms of allowing the, the proposed change in use for the golf course. It certainly has not proven to be a problematic intersection, and I would suggest that golf operations, which have been going on there all of this time, do not generate the high volumes of traffic that should be a future concern to this neighborhood. The point is that we're not, I don't think, making a dramatic or proposing a dramatic change to what has historically been done here under any of the phases of the development of this site. In terms of relief before you tonight, we're asking for a modification, excuse me, a special permit number 4282, simply to remove the 8,000 public play rounds per year cap. No other changes proposed. For that, under section 103.2.2, your special permit criteria, I would suggest that it be necessary for us to demonstrate and for you to find that what's proposed would not offer any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion for the site, nor any substantial harm to the established or future character of the town or the neighborhood. And I would suggest that, that based upon the information that we've been able to accumulate and based upon the years of experience at this site, none of that should reasonably be. I've also asked in the alternative for you to make a finding under section 104.3.2, because the open space village development is no longer a separate category of use under the table of uses in, in town of Yarmouth. As such, in order to change what was previously approved by allowing a change in this public use, it probably would be prudent for you also to find that what's proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use, which is now technically non-conforming, even though it has a special permit, it's no longer a separate category of use that I can ask for relief under going forward. In sum, I would suggest that the one significant change or two significant changes that have happened since the original approval in 1975 is that in 1975, public play on a golf course was not allowed. It was only allowed at this site by variance that was granted for the first phases of the development of this project because of the unique development of, of building the golf course first before the residences. The only other significant change is that you've actually already granted a special permit for public play at the site. And there's 13 years of experience under that existing special permit. It shows that it has not been detrimental, it has not proven to be problematic to the neighborhood or to the town to allow public play in, in high volumes at this site. We would suggest that having a golf course amenity is the good thing for the town. It's good for the town to have recreational facilities available for not only residents of Kingsway, but also the town in general and its visitors at no cost to the town. It's also would be extremely detrimental to the Kingsway residents, to 475 homeowners in that property. If they were not able to sustain their golf course, if they lost the use of that amenity and, and the value of their properties diminished significantly as a result of that, they as, as substantial taxpaying members of the town would be severely prejudiced by their inability to regain that golf course. And under the current business operation, they are not able to sustain it. It is a drain on the members, not only who play golf, but even more importantly, on the members and owners within the facility who do not play golf. So we would ask you to grant the modification of the special permit from 2009 by just simply removing the 8,000 round per year cap and to also find that doing so would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the present use. We have, as I indicated at the very beginning, several members of the Board of Trustees and of the Golf Committee here. If there's additional questions that they can answer for you, if I'm unable to, we'd be happy to do that. And if there's more information you need, we'll get it for you. So with that, I appreciate your patience and your diligence in hearing us out. We would be pleased if you would grant this permit and allow this to go forward.
Thank you, Attorney Reed. I'm gonna go now to questions from the board. Dick, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I know a couple people have brought up that, what about not necessarily having unlimited play, but increasing, increasing the amount from the 8,000 to a higher figure? Has any, any thought been given to that?
As I indicated, I don't know how the 8,000 was arrived at in the first place. But, but the, the professionals who have reviewed the, the course operation have indicated that the cap is a problem for them. The, the highest round year that they had was approximately 17,000 rounds per year. That was in 2020. The professionals have indicated that they need to get up that, that up to at least 20,000 rounds per year in order to be viable. So I, I wouldn't know how to set a number beyond that that would be sufficient without us having to come back again. But in response to some of those same concerns from a few neighbors who have written into you, it is not the intention of this to turn this into a public golf course. It is the intention that this remain the Kingsway private golf course, available principally to the residents of Kingsway, but that public play be allowed to supplement their use for the, for the benefit and preservation of the golf course. They will remain in the operational package for this property. Continued memberships by the owners within the facility, member preferences and tee time reservation preferences, league play, group play, everything that they currently have will continue to be preserved. And the public play will supplement their private operation of that course.
During the high number of plays during 2020, I take it that was probably kind of running at full, full tilt there in terms of being crowded most of the time during, during that year. Was there any issue that anybody had brought up at all about parking problems or parking on the main road down there or the parking area filling up because of that?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll defer to anybody who can, who can tell me otherwise. They're indicating no.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Tell me what the months of operation would be of the golf course. It's not going to be open year-round, is it?
Do they officially close?
Generally, it'd be March to around Thanksgiving.
It indicates that general operations are from March to Thanksgiving roughly?
The, the members are allowed to go walking, you know, the pro shop's not open, but people who are residents can go out.
And then not outside of the March to November? And you mentioned the traffic that you had, you had gotten some numbers on. Was, was that, was that in the prime months? During the, during the summer, obviously, we have a lot more traffic on that street than we do, or that road than we do in other months. Is that an average 1,400 or is that the peak?
That's, that's not a strict numerical. That was my number that I pulled from their numbers. The traffic counts that were available from the Cape Cod Commission included at the Setucket Road end, a study done in June of 16, one in August of 2012, and one in August of 2009. At the Union Street entrance, they did a June of 2018, June of 2017, July of 2013, June of 2009, and July of 2008. So they were almost all.
Pretty much summer months then. Yeah, summer months. Okay, thank you.
And I can provide that if you'd like a copy of that.
One of my questions was, what do you, what do you expect as far as the number of rounds per year, which is something I'd, I'd like to know. You mentioned that a minimum of 20,000 would be, would be necessary to run it financially.
To make it viable as a business operation.
What do you expect? Is there a number you're expecting or they're targeting?
We're certainly hoping to have at least the 20, 20,000 per year.
The expectation is that that is going to ramp up over, over three years, the next.
Mention who you are if you. Sorry, I'm Kevin Howard and I'm the property manager at Kingsway. The expectation is that it is going to ramp up. So I think the first year projection was 13,000. And it, it wouldn't be even till year three that we get up to 20,000. One other thing that I thought I would mention is the property does not have a driving range. So you have none of that random traffic that is not related to actual rounds of golf that you would get at other, other golf courses. And, and also, I don't know if you mentioned, it's, it's actually an executive of par 60, so it is not a regulation course either.
I was gonna ask that. So I, I believe when the, when the original variance was provided, when the development was originally developed back in 75, this, this space was considered part of the green, the open space of a clustered environment. Was that, was that correct?
Yes, the, the golf course is approximately 70 acres in area and it is part of the 100 acres of open space on the site, which is about 200 acres total.
Golf course is 70 acres?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
It's more than I, than I thought I read in someplace, but that's okay. I guess I, I'm a little concerned about, and I, I just want to be honest, I'm a little concerned with the fact that the green space of a clustered environment is now going to become a commercial entity. This what, green space is usually meant to be kept open for the use of residents in a clustered area. So I'm just a little concerned with that and bringing this up to a full commercial space is something that I'm a little concerned.
So not all of the, so there's 100 acres of open space? The golf course only comprises 70, 70 acres of the 100.
Understood.
So.
And that the, the entire community is on what, 250 acres or something like that?
It's on 200 acres.
200 acres, yeah. So we've got 500 units on 200 acres and that's a very dense environment. So the fact that part of that is going away, it's going to be used as a commercial, it just concerns me. That's all I'm saying.
Well, it's not going away.
It's not going away, but it, it's not being, it's not.
It's gonna be more utilized than it is now.
Yes.
But, but probably not more than was intended to be used.
The purpose of green space, though, is to be kept for, mostly for the community. That was the intent originally. A variance that originally came out, my understanding, was to allow the golf course to be used publicly just to help finance the environment as it was being developed.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think one of the, one of the variables has been that the community is aged. So you have that precipitous drop, drop off in memberships and somehow there's got to be a way to supplement that, otherwise there's going to be an, an additional financial burden put on all the homeowners.
I understand. A lot of people now live there that didn't, didn't come for golf community, although so it's a dilemma. You buy into a golf community, you know, situation, but that's all I had for questions right now. Thank you.
If I may respond to that, though, but the, the actual activity on the golf course, the number of people walking around and hitting golf balls is not going to be any different from what was originally envisioned in the 1975 special permit. In fact, it probably still would be less. At that time, as I indicated, we had at the peak operation, 400 resident members who played golf all the time in this golf course. We now have only about 100. So we're, we're trying to supplement that with public play, but it's the same amount of play as would have been envisioned under the original special permit just by different people.
Yes, I just look at it as a little differently. It's not a, it's now a commercial environment versus, and it's a residential neighborhood, it's a commercial entity, and that's just, that's a different type of use. That's my concern. That's all I had. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. John, do you have any questions?
Just a question of curiosity. In 2020, you exceeded the 8,000 rounds. It's 17,000. How many times prior to that or since then has the 8,000 round cap been an issue?
Zero.
So you, so it's only been an issue once and when we're expecting to do 20,000 rounds at least in the future?
Yes.
How do you expect to accomplish that?
Just more, more marketing to the local community and also a better job of capturing transient summer visitors.
That's all I had, Sean. Thanks.
Just out of curiosity, Sean, do you expect this to take away from golf in other, on other golf courses? Just out of curiosity, I mean, we have, we do have two public courses in town that we have to maintain on a, enter FIS funds. I'm just concerned about, will that affect those golf courses?
It's conceivable, but, but as Kevin indicated, it's really a different market. The, the executive course is only about 50% as long as Bass River Golf Course. It, it's a par 60 instead of a par 72. It really is designed to accommodate a different golfer than, than would play either Bass River or Bayberry Hills.
So it's more competitive to Blue Rock?
Well, Blue Rock is, is even smaller than this. Blue Rock is only a, a par three golf course. And, and it's again, it's about half the size of, of, or 50% smaller than, than Kingsway. So yes, there may be some overlap, but I don't think it's a direct. But I don't think it's a direct competitor with either Bass River or Bayberry Hills, although some people may choose to play there because it's an easier course. But they can already do that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, one more question. Do you plan to offer more memberships to the public? Or how many do you offer now?
Currently, they're allowed to offer two hundred memberships to the public.
Okay.
So they have about forty who've taken advantage of that.
So you're not even meeting the two hundred or not?
Not asking for anything, any change of that, no.
Thanks.
I'll set, John?
Yes.
Tim, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. So Attorney Reed, I understand what you're asking for here. So to sum it up, if I'm understanding it, this is running a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit each year. Is that correct?
Actually, more than that. That's the operating budget. But that's not even covering what should have been done also for maintenance and for improvements. But yes, that's the approximate number for the current operating deficit.
Okay, okay. I don't really have any other questions at this point. I fully understand what the situation here is. Is there anything else that you wanted to add at this time, Attorney Reed?
No, thank you very much.
Is there anything else? Any other board members that have any questions?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to the audience. And instead of asking people to come to the microphone who are in favor of this petition, I want someone to come, if they wish, to come to the microphone to speak in opposition of this petition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Do I see anyone in the audience that is here in opposition?
They're on their way, Sean. Just a second.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. My camera view, I don't I'm the audience. I can see everybody, but not.
Try to clue you clue you in.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. Good evening. If you could identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Lou Matrasia. I live at Kingsway, thirty two West Woods.
Just move back a bit. That's okay. What was your name again?
Lou Matrasia.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a point of clarification that I'd like to ask the attorney.
Okay.
So if you look at a hundred spaces of parking at the golf course, and you look at twenty four people coming per hour to park there. They don't come and go every hour. They come and go every four hours. So times four is ninety six people who are parking cars there for four hours at a time. So where does that leave us with the people who belong to the club? People who are going to the restaurant, people who go to the restaurant after they play a round of golf. We're talking about four or five hours at least of sitting there. No parking spaces left.
Well, I guess I can answer that that hasn't been a problem to date, to our knowledge. But the scenario that I suggested was an extreme case of every single person coming from off premises to park in this parking lot. And that's not likely to be the scenario. It's also very unlikely that every single person will come in their own car as opposed to some people coming together in groups of two or three. I think past practice, including the busiest years, have shown actual flow of traffic that comes to it from the site.
I'm not convinced that there's enough parking for that.
Is there anything else you'd like to add, ma'am?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in our audience? If so, please come to the microphone.
I'm right up.
Please step up. Can you identify yourself, please?
My name is Jane Benoit. I lived at One Forest Gate. We my husband and I have lived there since twenty eighteen, but we've been members of the golf course for over thirty years. We've seen a lot of the different changes that have taken place as it was built, as it's been changed over the years. And we do have some concerns about the unlimited play, especially since it's been mentioned here tonight that the golf course hasn't even hit the maximum of the eight thousand. I think that eight thousand rounds is probably a pretty sufficient number of outside play. We are concerned about the traffic, not so much about the intersection as much as the internal traffic in Kingsway, because many of the residents there walk. And the increased traffic, I think, could be an issue certain times of the year with the sun. If they're not walking on the sidewalks and walking in the roadway, you you can't even see them walking in the roadway. I'm concerned about that additional traffic, and I'm concerned about the parking spaces. When it's mentioned that if the parking lot fills up, you could go over and park over near the post office. I don't really see a lot of people parking over there and walking back over to the golf course. Concerned that they'll just pull up and park on the grass. I also think that there's an issue with the storage of the golf carts. I'm told that there is space in the cart barn for fifty golf carts. And during the height when of twenty twenty, when we had the maximum number of players there, carts were at a premium. People came to play and the carts were not available for them to go out at their assigned tee times so that they had to wait for a cart to come in because there weren't sufficient carts. So if they the new management company decides to add additional carts, where are those carts going to be stored and or parked on the property? Also, with unlimited outside rounds, I'm concerned about the impact to our quiet enjoyment of the property. If the course is full from first thing in the morning till late at night in order to get those twenty thousand rounds, when are they going to be doing the maintenance on the course? When will they be running the mowers? When will they be running the equipment? Early in the morning, late in the day? You know, it's a quiet enjoyment issue, I think. So I'm concerned about that. I also reviewed the website of one of the potential management companies, and they listed ten commandments to have fun playing golf, two of them of which are a concern to me. One is listen to music, bring your devices. Well, I'm aware that many young players today now play music while they're on the course, but I'm not so sure that that is a bit of Kingsway community. I also it also said, enjoy a cold beer or glass of wine while playing. Wow, Kingsway and the Yarmouth courses, as far as I know, have a policy of no liquor on the courses. It does appear to me that the courses managed by other courses managed by this company are regulation courses and not courses that are in residential communities. And I'm concerned about them packing the course with additional players. So I've thought a lot about it. We've played at the golf course for a lot of years. And because of the concerns that we have regarding this additional play, we respectfully request that the petition for unlimited rounds of golf at Kingsway be denied. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question before you go, ma'am?
Of course.
Yeah, well, thank you. And you're a member right now of the course?
Yes, and have been for many years.
Well, are you concerned at all that the course is not viable and that it's losing money and at some point it's going to become insolvent?
Well, you know, I don't know a lot about that financial end. However, I do know that our condo fees pay for for open space, which I think is the number that they're referring to this evening. And if you're a golf course community and you live on a golf course, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that some of your condo fee is going to pay for the golf course when the golf course never evolved to have in the four or five hundred members that they wanted to have when it was originally built. So I think if you're living in a golf course community, some of your money has to go to that. I'm aware that that money does go for open space. And to call it a deficit, I I don't know if that's a deficit or not. It's a contribution to the open space of the property that we own.
Well, ma'am, currently is do you pay dues to be a you pay dues to be a member of the course, right?
That's correct.
And is that exclusive from your homeowner's fees?
That's correct.
Okay, so do you look at the budget, the operating budget for the course, you being a member? Are you aware of the numbers that the petitioner is speaking of right now?
Just only the numbers that I've been that have been that I no, I can't say I've reviewed those numbers.
Well, I I would just ask you to consider, and I'm just throwing this out here for food for thought, but and I'm aware of a lot of condominium associations that the members pay for the course. It's in their dues, and it's a considerable amount of money per month to belong to a golf course. But what was going to be your position if you wake up in a couple of years and they tell you we're closing the course because we're insolvent?
I I'm sorry. I don't have an answer to that question. It came.
You don't really have the answer. I just wanted you to consider that that possibility because what I'm hearing tonight from the petitioner is they're basically running a deficit right now, which means technically they are insolvent. And at some point, it's going to be put out that you're either going to change a business model like they're proposing or they're going to tell all the homeowners, if you want to keep it open, you're going to pay three times as much in your monthly dues. And I don't know that that's going to happen. And if it doesn't happen, what's going to happen is when you look out your back door, you're going to see a bunch of tall grass that doesn't get cut. And it's just going to be a wasted piece of property. And then you're going to have to deal with that. So I I I'm not suggesting I appreciate where you're coming from, and I'm not I'm only saying this to you because I think there are others that have these concerns, and we may hear from them as well. But I'm just wondering if if there's been some dialogue between the members and the management company and how these numbers are working and the seriousness of where the course is right now financially.
Well, I think the only thing I can say to that is that that there's a lot of information out there, and not all of it is always accurate. I I hear what you're saying, and of course, you know, it's just my opinion.
No, no, no. And we certainly appreciate your opinion. All right, I'm just again throwing some food for thought out there just for some consideration. But thank you for your thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who can speak in opposition to this petition?
I don't I don't see anyone else, Sean. When we do have some some sent in ones, I don't know if you want to do that now or at the end.
I can do that. I've got to pull them up on my computer screen.
I've got some that were also came that you came in late. So I don't know if you want me to not sure if you want me to just run through the ones that are here.
Who are they from?
There's two of them are from Kathleen Schneider.
Okay, we only have to read one of hers. I have two of her letters. Is she present tonight?
Is she here? I think she said she wasn't going to be able to attend among the letters. And then the other third one is from David. Oh, boy, I'm not going to be able to say this.
Yeah. I've got his letter somewhere.
Obachowski.
Okay, so those are the three that I have here.
Okay, if you'd like, I can read those into the record. You want me to do that?
If you'd like to.
Okay, I'm just going to read a couple of letters. Excuse me. I'm going to have to turn to looking to be into the computer screen. To the Yama Court of Appeals, I am an abuser to Kingsway Golf Course, sixty two Hockenam Road. I am not opposed to some increase. I he's in a butter. Okay, so he's actually not a owner inside Kingsway. There's a sixty two Hockenam Road. I am not opposed to some increase in the cap on the public rounds of golf, but it does seem prudent to go for eight thousand. From eight thousand rounds annually to unlimited would not a less risky approach be to increase the rounds incrementally? So we have a chance to review any issues with parking noise, et cetera. I'm not sure what goals for unlimited play would be fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. What would be the impacts? I would strongly suggest starting at a thirty percent increase to ten thousand four hundred rounds and then review the impact. That is from David Obachowski, perhaps. I said your name wrong, sir. I apologize. That would be something I think that I I would be interested in is some type of a review. Should we be inclined to approve this petition tonight? We have had petitions that were this has been reviewed on a yearly basis prior to this. Let me go to the other one. This is from Kathleen Schindler, two twenty two Case Pass. I am a resident and golf member of Kingsway Community. I'm unable to attend the September eighth meeting. So I will be out of town, and so I'm writing this letter to express my concerns. Essentially, I believe Kingsway Trust Board members do not represent the wishes and ideas of how current residents in Kingsway Golf Members feel about the trust proposal to allow unlimited public play on the Kingsway Golf Course. I feel the Kingsway Trust is trying to railroad their proposal to the town with relatively no input from us, Kingsway residents and golfers. They do not want to analyze the proposal with respect to its impact on traffic, parking, safety, quality of life issues, property values, as well as golf membership access to tee times and league play. As you know, Kingsway Golf Course is a small executive course with limited facilities. It originally was a private course serving Kingsway residents, and in later years, opened the course for public use on a limited number numbers basis set by the town of Yama. Again, the facilities are limited with respect to golf cart storage, charging stations, equipment, storage, parking, et cetera. There's no driving range, and so golf lessons have not been a viable option. Also, keep in mind that there is a good sized restaurant, Montebello's, whose customers use the golf parking for overflow use as here are only twenty restroom parking spaces, five of which are handicapped. One has to wonder what would happen if the restaurant engaged in more frequent larger events for weddings, graduations, et cetera. Our access vehicles to be parked along the circuit. Emergency vehicles are here routinely for Heatherwood residents presently access presenting access issues. As we all know, there is considerable acrimony directed towards our current golf management team. Lizanne and Bob Miller of the Kingsway, I hope I pronounced your name right, by the Kingsway Trust Board, the agenda of the trust is to bring in a new golf management team, Sterling Company. But this company is not interested in less unlimited public access. It's granted. In summary, I feel Kingsway Trust, the Kingsway Trust does not seek resident and golf members involvement or input. And more importantly, they refuse to perform any objective analysis of their proposal in respect to traffic, parking, safety, quality of life issues, property values, et cetera. Their agenda is to open the floodgates for unlimited public access in order to bring in Sterling Company. This will impact quality of life issues for Kingsway residents big time. This court, the course will be overrun with players paying cheap rounds of golf, which is the platform that the Sterling group operates on. I personally would like to have the Miller Golf Management Team continue to run the golf course, and I can confidently state that there are a large number of us who feel the same way. It was a reason the town of Yarmouth limited public access, and I hope the current town council members reject the current Kingsway Trust proposal. Respectfully, Kathleen Schindler. That's all I have. Would and I'm not seeing anybody on my screen again, Mr. Cameraman. Now, I can invite if there's anyone in the audience that is speaking in favor of this petition other than what your council has presented here tonight. Is there anything new that anybody wants to add? Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this matter?
Sean, before you go with that, there were there were some other letters that came in today. I don't know if you want.
Yeah, there's there's.
Was this part of it or not?
There's another letter from also from Mr. There's another letter from, also from Mrs. Schindler.
Oh, we're not going to read two letters from her, we just read her letter.
And then, and then just, just so you know, we, we have a, a document that was assigned petition that went around the community. And they, um, the summary is that there were four hundred and seventy-seven signatures. Not sure.
I'm aware of that, I'm, I'm not going to put that into the record.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, there's a, we received a letter yesterday who would like his letter in support. Read into the record.
Okay, good, and who, who is that?
Mr. McGibb, or Dean.
October twenty-sixth.
Did you receive the letter from Charles and Sandra McGibbin?
McGibbin.
I have one from Jerry Garnick, I have one, one from William and Eleanor Dean.
Yeah, Garnick was, was dated, yeah, two days ago, so maybe that's the one you may not have.
I have one here dated September second, two thousand twenty-two from a Robert McGinnis. President of, Board of Trustees. Give me one second here, I'm battling laryngitis.
Let me just let you know, Sean, there's five letters that I have that are in support in addition to the petition. First one is from Mr. McGinnis, Mick McGinnis. There's one from October ninth, um, from Sandra and Charles McGibbin. There's one from October seventeenth. From William and Eleanor Deanan, Deanham. And there's also one from October twentieth received, and this is from. I think from Paulina. I, I, so I mean, I can't read the last name, it's.
Well, I can. But let me, let me see which ones I have right here, I've got one here from. Robert McGinnis, President of the Board of Trustees. And he writes to the Board of Appeals. At its meeting today, this would be September second, two thousand twenty-two. The Board of Trustees of Heatherwood at Kingsway, an independent living community within Kingsway Complex. Voted unanimously to support the request of the Kingsway Trust to eliminate. The capitation. On public play at its golf course, the Board of Trustees believes this action to be in the best interest of its two hundred and forty-two residents. Signed, Robert McGinnis. I'm not sure what others I have.
All the additional correspondence other than the second letter from Ms. Schindler are all in, in favor of the application.
I have another one from William and Eleanor Dean. As butters of Kingsway Golf Course, we approve the petition, feel requested to seek unlimited play. I'll try to see if I can each of them. That's theirs again. For. Okay. Well, this one's pretty short, um, from Pauline Salem. Uh, put me down as a person who agrees to make this to public golf course, yes to all, allow, Pauline Salem. Thank you for the point. Number five. This is from Mr. Gerald. This is from Jerry Garnick, Gerald S. Garnick. Uh, did one, did board members, I submit this letter to show my support for the petition submitted by the Kingsway Trust to increase the rounds of golf to Kingsway Golf Course. Kingsway Community is a self-sufficient and beneficial community to the town of Yama. Kingsway places very little burden on the town's resources, there are no children in the DUI school system. It takes care of its landscaping, ensuring it's in perfect shape for the various individuals who decide to walk through our community. We maintain our wastewater treatment facility, we maintain our infrastructure, we maintain our roads and do our own snow plowing. All of which are at no cost to the town of Yama, and more importantly, to be, we pay our taxes and it's fallen on time. We also maintain our own golf course, which for the past decade has been underutilized. Kingsway Golf Course, just like the excellent restaurants, Gil Montebello are on our premises. It's a business enterprise to allow the Kingsway Community to receive income in order to reduce or maintain monthly condominium fees. As everyone knows, costs and expenses of maintaining these important structures and facilities within the community is skyrocketing. The Kingsway Trust has petitioned this board to allow the community to have the golf course reach its highest potential. Within the golf enterprise of the town of Yama, the town has been fortunate in that forty-five holes. Of golf at Bayberry and Bass River have been over the past number of years utilized to their fullest potential. The town has brought their golf courses to a level that is enviable by other communities. The other golf course in town, Blue Rock enjoys a full membership. As of January twenty twenty-two, Blue Rock's membership was full and they are not taking any new members. It is now necessary for the Kingsway Trust to reach the golf course's fullest potential in order to provide benefits to its residents. But this also allows the town to advertise and to have the motel owners and restaurant owners to advertise. That there are, there is another golf amenity available to our residents and to our tourists for their enjoyment while visiting Yama. The allowance of the Kingsway Trust petition to the board will allow us to occur. The granting of the Kingsway Trust petition enhances Yama to be on the forefront. On the Cape is a major golf destination, the granting of the Kingsway Trust application is a win-win for the town, Kingsway Trust. Kingsway residents, Yama residents and all of our tourist guests, respectfully submitted Gerald S. Garnick. That is all I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone, and if I've already read your letter, please don't come up.
I'm assuming everyone else is, is included in the signed petition, is that correct? Okay, um, I think the rest of the people have signed the petition and. All right, we're there here. Just would wondered if Mr. Reed could comment on some of the, the things brought up, just like to hear what he has to say.
I think you've heard fewer than six opinions. You have a petition by four hundred and seventy-seven people in favor of this petition. Uh, in terms of the, the argument, the internal opinion. Contest, it's your decision to make, but in terms of the support within the Kingsway Community. I would suggest the support for this proposition overwhelmingly. One comment about a period of, of a problem with golf carts. I'm told that that was during the COVID period of time when only one person could ride in each cart and therefore there was a shortage of carts. Uh, that is not an ongoing problem. You, you heard a couple of comments about, um, somebody in favor of this becoming a public golf course. And someone asserting that the agenda of the trustees was to convert it to a commercial golf course. Neither of those is correct. The intention of the committee is to salvage the private golf course. By allowing additional public play to subsidize what is currently being subsidized by non-golfers within the, within the community, within our community. It is intended to remain a private golf course. With additional public play to make it viable as a private golf course, it will remain under private control. It will remain for the principal benefit of the residents and owners and members within Kingsway. And around their play. Be the public play that will subsidize the course and make it viable for them to continue to have a golf course in their community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Reed.
Sean, I just had one more, one question for Mr. Reed, if that's okay?
No, go right ahead, Jay.
I know I'm, I'm going to be supportive of this if, but if, if I am supportive of it, it's going to be with a review period and a review process?
Absolutely.
And I understand you have to make a contract with a, with a, with a management company. So can you tell me what type of contract that's going to be in duration and how long it would be?
It's a three year.
Three year.
They're looking for a three year.
Okay. And, and just as a point of, a point of reference to the last letter that was written. And I can tell you from experience, it, the Bayberry and Bass River Golf Courses are not at full capacity. They've done very well the last few years, especially during pandemic, but they are not at full capacity. So just wanted that to be clarified and I can tell you that because I'm on GEC, so.
Pretty busy during the morning hours.
It is, I'm not saying it's not busy. I'd love to get more tee times, but I can tell you it's not.
I wish the members had more tee times as well.
Everybody wants the morning tee time. Okay, thank you.
Is anyone else, have any further questions for the petitioner?
Yes, I have one, what is the actual operating cost of the course? Annual total operating budget for the course?
A million dollars.
One million, okay.
Mr. Reed, um, hundred and one parking spots in, in the, in the main parking lot. Do you know how many other open spaces there are on the grounds? Does anyone know?
You mean how many total parking spaces on a total site?
Open that aren't either, you know, owned or assigned to one of the residents.
I, I believe the only other unassigned area is the immediately adjacent parking lot that, that is for the. A post office, for the management office. There's a pool in there.
There are a few spaces by the tennis courts.
What would be done with the surplus of, of money? If you have twenty thousand, uh, memberships, it'd be about a million five. What would happen with the other, if you would actually get?
They're looking for twenty thousand memberships, they're looking for twenty thousand rounds per year.
Sorry, sorry, so that would be a million five, what, where would the surplus go?
Sure, yeah, so, uh, we just had a. We just had a study done by the U.S. Golf Association. And there is, uh, they identified millions of dollars in deferred maintenance. Unfortunately, that money that we've been putting into the, has literally been going into the golf operation. Nothing has gone into anything. We've got a thirty-year-old irrigation system, we've got tee boxes that haven't been done, uh, sand traps. Uh, there's a bunch of tree work that hasn't been done and carp paths, some of the original carp paths. So there's a lot of work to be done on the course, that's where we go.
That's, that's quite a bit.
And, and I should say that if it doesn't happen, then unfortunately that burden is going to fall on the homeowners.
Why would you just stop at twenty thousand, just ask for twenty thousand people? That's going to, that's going to bring in a revenue of a million and a half. And you're going to have a five hundred thousand dollar surplus every year at that point, why would you just ask for twenty thousand instead of unlimited?
I think because they'd like to get it up to more than that if possible.
Yeah, it'd be about fifty percent capacity, I think, I think the numbers I was running is if you ran about fifty thousand plays, you could do a, a year there, so. That would be a lot of traffic that, at that point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any further questions for the petitioner? See none, Attorney Reed, is there anything else that you would like to add before we close the hearing to the public?
No, I, I think we've covered everything we needed to address and planned to address with you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. At this time, we are going to close the, uh, hearing to public comment and we are going to discuss this with members. Dick, tell me your thoughts.
I was just wondering, I'm not sure if everybody in favor had a chance to speak if, uh, I mean, I guess they signed the petition, is that what we're looking at is good enough, but I don't know.
I, I, I think we can say that they're in favor of this, I, I think all bases have been covered unless someone's going to come up and I'm more than willing to do that. Someone's going to come up and add something that's material from what we've heard.
Uh, if you're comfortable, I guess I am. Uh, I don't think I have anything else to add, I, I agree with Jay that maybe having some review at least. Should we, uh, should we agree to the appeal, I think would be in order. I certainly understand the reasoning behind it. And nobody likes to run a deficit and. You know, on the other hand, I can see why maybe a few members don't want to see it get too crowded. But I think the overwhelming. Response, uh, needs to be looked at. Uh, I, I don't, I don't have the concern that was brought up about open space and that's less open with more people on it. I mean, open is, open as far as I'm concerned, I know that. You know, some open space developments, for instance, within the town, the open space has actually been needed to the town in conservation and so forth, so. Which means anybody in the town can use it, it's not just for the people of Kingsway. So, open is open, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about. Whether the Kingsway residents are using it or whether the general public at large is using it. So I, I, I don't find. Um, any reason not, uh, not to provide relief in this case.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Jay, your thoughts?
I, I am reluctant, I just, I'm concerned about a few things. But if we could do something with a review period that took us out, say, once a year for the next three years before the next contract would come up. So we could, uh, make a decision at that point if it's gone all right. I mean, I, I do feel that open space should be open space for the, for the community that was designed for it. But I understand the issues. And I, I definitely understand the issues with running a finances around a golf course, trust me. That on a monthly basis too, so, uh, and we have the capital improvements which we've been trying to deal with for the town courses. And it's definitely a challenge. So I understand and I'm can help, would like to help. But I definitely feel that a review period would be at minimum.
I think that's a very good idea and I would support that as well. John, your thoughts?
Well, I did agree with both Dick and Jay on this. I guess the only question I would have is really is it necessary to go from eight thousand to unlimited? You know, is there a number, uh, twenty, twenty-five thousand? They would pull these guys out of, out of the hole. And satisfy some other residents that are worried about increased traffic and, and parking, so. Not opposed to unlimited, but I'm wondering if that's something that we might want to discuss.
Okay, all right. All right, well, um, my, my thoughts on that twenty thousand, although that sounds like a very large number, when you break it down on a daily basis for the time they're open, that's like. If you're lucky, eighty rounds of extra play per day. So, you know, I, I, I'm not really in the golf course business, I think they would love to get as many people in there as they can. I don't know that they're going to get as many people as they can, they do have some limitations. You know, this is an executive course, it's not, this is not a championship course. If it was a par seventy-two, maybe, I have played the course a few times in the past, it's a very nice course. But, you know, what you'd like to do and what you really can do, uh, can be two different things. But I certainly would support a review as Jay suggested. Tim, what are your thoughts?
I, I like the, uh, cap, I don't like the unlimited, um, just for the fact that. You know, if there is, if there's, is a surplus budget, um, you know, there's a lot of money being made, it could be over marketed. Just to get people in there and then if it could become too busy, um, so five hundred thousand surplus every year. That's, I think that's a, that's a decent number. So, and then that could be even set as a trial, um, you do that, if it's, if it's not going wrong, um, maybe increase that number later, but. Let's just see what twenty thousand does first before you just give it all, you know, just an open ticket. What you said you'd be comfortable with, so why don't just set that, set that.
I think, I think they said they need at least twenty thousand just to make it viable. So I have a feeling with profit from third parties, they probably want at least some profit margin.
That's a million five, yeah, versus a million dollar operating.
I'm just saying, just saying, if they said twenty thousand, so they're just probably looking for more than twenty at minimum.
That's, that's what I understood the representation to be as well. I, I. I was, if I can just chime in here. The issue what they would love to do, they would love to close the membership off at what they have. However, they can't do that obvious, for obvious reasons. Unless everybody wants to dig deep into their pockets. So they have the committee that runs their numbers that says we need X to just break even, in this case, I'm told it's twenty thousand. Uh, can I get my Zoom cameraman to get my board back if that's possible? You know, you're hearing right now, they've got an operating deficit of $360,000 a year. You hear they need sand traps redone, the golf course needs to be remodeled. They're going to have capital improvements above and beyond that. It's going to be necessary. So I think it's not only to the benefit of Kingsway, but to the benefit of the town as well, that we do everything in our power to help them. And so I would suggest that we give them the unlimited amount. And that we do have a review of this. If you want to have a review, if, you know, they say they got a three-year contract. If you want to review every year for three years, I'm okay with that. If the board is comfortable with that, we could review them after year one, review them after year two, and review them after year three. I think there should be some type of review. I don't know if we need that many. But if the board is inclined to want those reviews, I would certainly support it. But if if they don't get a number that becomes profitable, then they're just going to either throw their arms up in the air and say, forget it, and close the golf course, which will make Kingsway look very bad. Or they're going to turn around and raise everybody's fees. And I know golf, I know condominium associations where you're required to be a member of the golf course, and it's very, very expensive. So I don't think the residents want to go down that road. So it would be my suggestion that we grant their petition tonight. I think we should grant it in the form of removing the restriction from the 2009 decision. And quite frankly, the testimony that I've heard here tonight, I certainly think we could make a finding that what they're going to do is not going to be substantially more nonconforming than what they're doing right now. I don't see undue hazard nuisance or congestion to the surrounding neighborhood or to the zoning district in general or to the town. So I do think they have met the criteria that by law, I think the people that are keeping an eye on this are professional, meaning the trust itself overseeing the management group that they will hire. So I would recommend to the board that we support this petition. And again, I would support a condition that we have a one, two, and/or, and three-year review, if that is the pleasure of the board. So we can have the homeowners come back if there's a problem. We can address any problems if we have to tweak it. If we have to put in some conditions perhaps that we didn't think of, maybe we don't. Maybe everything runs fine. But at least that way, we can oversee this and keep a handle on it for the next three years.
It's going to take three years to get up to that. You were hoping three years to get to that potential anyways, correct?
That was their projection. And just for point of clarification, as we sit here today, we do not have a three-year contract with anybody. We have proposals that have asked for a three-year contract, and that probably will be the way it pans out. But today, we don't have such a contract. We have simply proposals along those lines.
But if you sign one in the next six months, it'd be nice if we could review before the next one is signed. That's what I'm looking at.
Unlimited, and then you can't get that back. How do we, what's the wording that we use to get that back if it goes awry?
Well.
It's temporary.
Residents realize that that is a problem. They don't like it because there's too much play. You want some kind of way out.
Well, if we had a review, all right, the review, I would suggest the language would give us the ability to modify it if necessary. Again, I hope they become a viable business. I'm not sure how easy that is. There's a lot of golf courses that can't do it. And it ends up that the owners in there pick up the tab for it. But they don't have a, they don't have a management group yet. So Attorney Reed, how would you propose that we put some condition as far as timeline is concerned? That you would notify the board at which time you signed a contract with a management company, and we could start a three-year clock from then? Would that work?
That would be fine. As you've indicated, the likelihood that it's not going to change overnight, no matter who signs the contract, it's going to be a gradual progression. And I think you're right, Chairman, if you include general language in your approval, that it is subject to further review into the imposition of either other or different restrictions based upon those reviews. I think that will cover you in terms of keeping your options open.
Just when is your desire to sign this new contract? Is it before the next season?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
No, because there's equipment that's going to be purchased.
Oh, I understand. But in reality, in reality, what is your?
We're hoping to get it done in the next month.
Okay, so my main concern, Sean, is that before they sign an additional contract, because you're going to sign it for three years, that we have some reviews. So that's why I would propose that we have a one-year review in case there's anything, and then a three-year review. And that review, I would like to see as the volume of the play, any impacts on the facilities or issues that might have come up for parking, et cetera, and any impact that might have been on the town, any town resources that were affected. Is that fair?
Yes.
Sean, does that sound all right with you?
That, I mean, that sounds okay with me. There is still a condition in there for them to report to us the number of rounds that are played there per year.
Right.
Are you looking, Attorney Reed, are you looking to strike that requirement? Or was that something that you could continue to supply to us?
If you'd like that, we can continue to do it. I'm not sure. It was not done very well in the past.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah, I know. Sometimes it's difficult to get there.
If you have an annual review, anyway, it seems to me we could do them both at the same time.
That would be fine, but there may be ongoing reports that I'm wondering, I think Sean's asking, ongoing regardless of what happens, keep that there so that you report to the town the number of rounds per year. If that's reasonable.
If you would like that.
Is that what you were getting at?
I mean, at least that way, we know the number of rounds. So it gives us somewhat of a baseline or some type of barometer to go by whereby if X number of rounds are being played, if there's a problem, then we can look at it and see what it looks like. Again, I think the people that are over there are going to police this some themselves. So, I mean, they've been doing it for a long time now, all right? And I looked at the number of rounds that have been played, excluding COVID, where you're right. I mean, everybody would do anything to get out and do anything during COVID. Everybody was looking for something to do. So I'm not sure. That's a good number to go by. And when I look at the other years, it looks like they're struggling to get to those rounds. They're not even coming close really to their, to their 8,000 rounds. So they really got to do something to get this thing up and going. So again, getting back to the conditions, I think what we would like, at least from my perspective, is once that we're notified, once the management contract has been signed, once they come in, that's when the three-year clock ticks, not from when we grant the petition. Because they could wait two and a half years before they hire somebody. So if we made it when they signed the contract, we do it, and we'll have a one-year and a three-year review. Do you want to do that?
I'd rather do annuals.
Okay, we can do that. So we'll do annual reviews for the first three years, starting when the management contract is signed. So if it's signed in December, then we have reviews the following December and that following, following Decembers.
For instance.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Uh, yes.
I'll try.
Go ahead.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to modify the previous special permit to allow unlimited play at the Kingsway Golf Course with the following conditions. We would do an annual review, a notification of the signing of the contract with a management company, and an annual review from that period for the first three years with the ability to make modifications on as needed. And again, I'd like to cover, as far as what to cover, it's, you know, obviously the number of rounds, how the facilities are operating, any impacts on the facilities, parking, and any impacts on the town, if you could.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, there was a question?
Who's asking the question? We're closed right now.
Oh, we're closed.
Just for clarification to people in the audience, when we have our reviews, any of the owners or members is certainly invited to come in, voice your concerns, voice your support. We will have another review. We'll have a review. It'll be similar to what we had tonight, okay? And if there are things that aren't going right, maybe we can tweak something then, okay? So the conditions, so what we're going to do, the motion on the table is to remove the 2009 cap on the number of rounds to be played at the golf course. So we're going to modify that petition and remove that condition. And we are going to have the petitioner submit notice to this board as to when the new management company signs an agreement with them. Once they do, three years, for the next three years, we will have annual reviews relative to the number of rounds that are played and seeing what, if any, detrimental impact it has on Kingsway. And if we have to make some adjustments, then we can discuss that at a later date. Does that sound right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Reed.
Might I ask that the motion include a finding that what's proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Yes, yes. I think that should be included in the decision. And it's necessary that there's going to be no one who has a nuisance or congestion to the surrounding neighborhoods, zoning district, or the town.
Is Mr. Reed going to write this up?
Attorney Reed, would you draft a decision for my review?
I would be happy to.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none.
It was seconded.
It was seconded. Okay, so the motion was made by Jay, seconded by Dick. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. It's unanimous. Attorney Reed, as you know, I don't have to explain to you, 20 days must elapse from the time that the petition or the decision is clocked at the town clerk's office, after which time we will require you to go to the Board of Appeals and to record your Okay, they know where they're going, okay. Folks, we have other petitions. Could you clear the room, please? Jay, show them out of the room, would you please?
Yeah, excuse us. We still have a meeting going. So if you could go out in the hallway, if you have any conversations you want to have, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right, next petition. Our next petition is petition 498-2 Allison Bailey and Joseph Odette, 438 Route 6A, Yarmouth, Fort, Mass. It's in the zoning district 40. The applicant seeks a special permit for section 407.2, subparaphrase 2, to create a family-related apartment, a family-related accessory apartment and/or variance from 407-2-7 to exceed the maximum allowed square footage. Is the petitioner present?
Hi, my name is Allison Alasty. I'm with A3 Architects. I'm representing the owners, Allison Bailey and Joseph Odette.
Okay, could you tell us a little bit about your petition, please?
Yes, so this is a classic, beautiful, old historic house on 6A. Two summers ago, the existing barn on the property was blown over by a tropical storm. I don't know if you saw that, but it was partially blown over and we had to demolish it due to safety. And the homeowners were interested in replicating it. So we've designed a new barn that is on the exact same footprint as the barn that was there before. So I think it's 26 feet by 26 feet. It's in the identical location, and we really wanted it to be a replica of what was there. We've been to the Old Kings Highway Historic Board. The front facade facing 6A is basically as close as we can to what was there. We took some liberties with the windows on the side elevations and the back elevations. The existing barn was unconditioned. It was just used for storage. So we're proposing a more intense use. We're proposing the first floor be basically a storage or garage, unconditioned space. And then if you look on the plan, you'll see there's a corner of that that we're proposing is just a simple mudroom. It's a stair up to the second floor. On the second floor, proposing just an open living space, the kitchenette and the bathroom. And then we have a small loft space on the third floor, doesn't have full head height everywhere because of reduced square footage there. But so it's a little bit larger than I believe what's allowed by the special permit for 800 square feet. But I feel like this is a classic ADU. It's behind the house. It's a barn. It's very much in keeping with the character and, you know, the street appearance of what's happening in the neighborhood. I think it's a really appropriate ADU for the neighborhood of what you should see on 6A. I know ADUs aren't one size fits all, but this feels like the right thing for this neighborhood. And I did want to point out, it is going to be used by family. It's going to be for the applicant's parents to live there.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, you have to bear with me. I'm not an attorney, just the architect.
Don't worry, you're doing fine.
I learned a lot about golf courses, too.
Okay, okay. All right, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Do you have the exact square footage that you're proposing tonight?
It's on the first page of the floor plan, the first floor plan. So I can read it out. As I said, it's 26 by 26 feet. The first floor is 628 square feet of what we're calling barn or garage, unconditioned storage. And then it has 48 square feet of mudroom. The second floor is the full footprint, so it's 676 square feet. And we're proposing 300 or so square feet on the loft. So it adds up to a total of 1,000 square feet or 1,042 square feet for the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. It looks like a beautiful barn. Unfortunately, we would not be able to give you a special permit because it's not allowed under the bylaw. It exceeds 800 square feet. You would have to come before us, which you've already done. You're requesting a variance. Now, whether you meet that criteria for a variance, I will not say at this point. I don't believe you do. So this is my question. I looked at your floor plan, and I'm a little, I don't see any measurements on it. I see what you wrote to the side, but I don't see any measurements on the actual, inside the walls delineating what the dimension. any measurements on the actual, inside the walls delineating what the dimensions are of the rooms.
I had a question similar to that, because I think the loft area, it has knee walls, and I think, don't we usually only count the space at seven feet high at minimum? Is that what we've done in the past?
Well, no, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna consider from knee wall to knee wall, but what I have, I don't know what that number is, do you have that on a plan?
On the A1.3, the third floor plan, we considered it at five feet, the knee wall, the third floor space does not meet the building code definition of habitable space, it's habitable space per the building code is 50% of the area has to be at seven feet, sort of what your point was getting at, so this loft space, which I listed as 300 square feet or so, is not habitable space.
None of it?
Not by the definition of the building code, you know, there's a lot of...
Well, I'm not gonna quibble with you, but I consider that habitable space, and this port has always considered that habitable space. If you get a determination from the building commissioner that that's not habitable space, I think we consider that, but I don't think he's gonna do that. But my question to you is, do you have a plan that shows the dimensions, the inside dimensions of what you want to do? Not just a legend to the right telling us what the size is, but inside, in other words, this room's 20 feet by 20 feet, do you have that?
We have dimensions on our plans.
Says 13 by 20 feet, which, actually, 13 by 20 feet is 260 square feet, so I'm not even sure where the 300 and whatever it was, 318 feet come from, I think you're giving a larger figure than what I'm...
Preventing from the interior.
Okay, we can add that, absolutely.
Hold on, while the one's saying it, we'll look at something.
I think one of the problems is that we all kind of calculate square footage a little bit differently, and I definitely need to know what, right, okay.
Interior walls.
Okay. Then my numbers are all a little bit off, because we do it on the outside.
Did you ask the building inspector what he considered habitable space when you submitted this?
I certainly can't.
Well, if...
He's the one that referred us here, but I, you know...
The reason why he referred you to us is because his determination was you exceeded the 800 square feet. My question to you, and I can, how many floors are we counting, the second and third floor? Are we counting first, second, and third floor?
Mudroom on the first floor is also in the numbers.
Okay.
I would have a question about that, too, don't we usually minus, like, the stairway, for instance?
No.
No, that's included?
No, we don't, other towns do.
Okay.
But this is the issue that I have, are the people going to be using the loft as a bedroom?
No, it's a storage.
Where are they gonna sleep?
Well, it's like an open studio space on the second floor.
Well, it says living kitchenette, so I see the kitchen area, I see the living area, where's the bed gonna go?
Well, we don't always submit plans with, like, their furniture, I don't know exactly how they're gonna lay it out.
Well, where are the closets?
We don't have a closet.
You know, I think what I'd like you to do, and others can chime in on this, but I don't think I have enough information in front of me this evening to either vote yes or no, there's no reason we shouldn't support it, but I just don't think you have enough information here, I think you need inside dimensions, I think we need to see where the... I'd like to see you showing some closets, because you're gonna need to show closets, I'd like you delineate where the sleeping area is gonna be, the living area is gonna be. Up in this loft area, you said that's just storage, that's not gonna be used for anything except storage?
I mean, I'm the architect, I don't know exactly how they're going to use every square.
Well, did you have a conversation with them when you were designing it?
Yes. Older, I don't think they're gonna be going up and downstairs already, we tried to make that stair from the first floor to the second floor as comfortable as possible, so we're not trying to set up a townhouse.
Well, let me ask you something, they're gonna be living here, all right, the mudroom's on the first floor, boom, boom, boom. The barn is the barn, that's just storage, whatever you want to do, so your first floor, that's fine, I'm looking at the second floor, and I'm looking at the loft, those two cannot exceed 800 square feet, you don't qualify for a variance in this, unless you can meet the variance criteria, but before we get there, let's just talk about a special permit, you're supposed to be within 800 feet, now, I can tell you how you can do it easily, you can keep your second floor exactly the way you want it, the third floor, I presume, was gonna be where the sleeping quarters were, now, you have knee walls, the easiest way to do that is bring those knee walls in, so it breaks down that loft area, so it comes into the size of eight, no more than 800 square feet, now, I don't know what the distance is between those two knee walls, because if those are gonna be solid walls right there, I wouldn't hold it against you, I don't know what they measure, you said how many square feet is on the first floor, you got 26 by 26, what's that, 500 and...
The second floor, Sean, she has listed right now, it's 676 square feet.
It's 676.
And that's the outside dimensions.
Yeah, I didn't know that you counted inside.
No, we need to know what your rooms are gonna be, it's 26 by 26, isn't it? Yeah, 676, okay, so you got 676 on that floor. Well, that only leaves you 124 feet to go upstairs, which is not a lot, you know, 10 by 12.
You know, one thing I do want to say, and I'm not trying, you know, we can be continued and work on this and get right, but it's so hard, we work in all 15 towns, you all have different rules for ADUs, you all have different paths that are different, and I think we're trying to encourage housing on the Cape, we have this critical shortage, and maybe we didn't exactly fit in your hoops and we need to change this, but it's really hard out there, and homeowners are trying to do the right thing and make workforce housing and get parents living with them so they can help take care of them, it's hard to do this, all the towns are really different.
Well, I appreciate where you're coming from, but we're charged with enforcing the bylaw of the town of Yarmouth, and if you don't meet the criteria and you exceed 800 square feet, I mean, you knew what you should have known before you came, and you don't qualify for a variance, so...
I didn't think the third floor...
We can have a debate, my suggestion would be for you to go back and work these plans right here and cut it down to 800 feet, now, we are, we do have a proposed ADU bylaw that's going to be coming before town meeting, that my understanding is gonna increase that to 900, okay, so that would give you another 100 square feet, how soon are you planning on building this?
I don't know.
Well, I think they're gonna fast track that thing, okay, so I think 900 may be the new number, okay?
That may not be passing, so I would be cautious to encourage.
Well, it may not, it may not, I don't want to say that, you're right, you're right, that's not for me to say, that's for my one vote at town meeting.
Second, I think if she goes back and talks to the building commissioner and identifies whether the loft is even habitable square footage, because if it's not, then you can just identify for us, it's not habitable, and we just need to know it from him, if that's not, then you're under 800.
Right, okay.
For your dimensions.
Jay, Jay, that's accessible, that's habitable space up there. If we want to bring the building commissioner in or have her go get a determination, tells me that it's not, then that's gonna change what we've been doing here for a long time.
You have to have a dropped out stair if you want to make it that way.
And I can talk to the owners about that, like, lofting the second floor so we don't have a third floor, I just, I think I need to continue and do that.
That's fine, that's fine, but if you want, what I would say is, I don't know if maybe that loft, you can cut it down, and I don't know what you want to do, but it's a good-sized building and you're trying to get a, you're trying to use two floors for an in-law apartment, when you've got a good-sized building and you're using two floors, that can be tricky.
Can you clarify for me how the square footage calculation should be done, it's on the inside face of the exterior wall?
All habitable areas.
So, inside face of exterior wall and including stairs, or not including stairs?
We include stairs in the bylaw.
Should include stairs and closets.
Yep.
That's what I just read.
And when you come back, I'd like to have you delineate where all the closets are gonna be, where the sleeping areas are gonna be.
Okay.
So, we know that.
Okay.
So, how long do you need before you need to come back?
When's your next meeting?
Next hearing is January 12.
January 12? We'll need you to sign an extension as well. Is that okay with you?
That's a really long, that's, I don't know, how many, over two months?
We have full agendas.
I've been, okay.
So, if you could, okay, I'm sorry that we can't get you on before that, we only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, and those unfortunately are both full, or we would have brought you back on the next agenda.
Be really helpful if the building inspector had a letter, a determination letter that we get, so we know that this was gonna happen, you know, we could have done some of this in advance, I didn't know that.
Well...
Usually, you know, they're here at the meeting as well, and this is, we've been sitting here for an hour and 45 minutes.
Well, I think what you should do, if you have some questions for the building commissioner, is make an appointment to see him and go in and discuss all this with him. All right, so everybody's on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll continue your matter till January 12, thank you, have a nice night. The next matter on our petition, the next matter on our agenda is petition 4918, Michael and Anne Marie Mahoney, 45 Cedar Street, South Yarmouth, Mass, properties in an R25 zoning district, the applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2, subparagraph 3, or a variance from 203.5, to construct an addition within the front and side setbacks on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Is the petitioner here?
I am here. I am the...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yep, I was just getting to that, David Raquina, or Mr. and Mrs. Mahoney at 45 Cedar Street, Yarmouth.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about your petition, what you want to do?
All right, so what we have over at Cedar Street is a 12 by 32 addition on the left side of the home, and it's basically to create two bedrooms. They're gonna reduce an interior bedroom that's in the home right now, and they're gonna create two bedrooms on that left side. Mr. and Mrs. Mahoney have children and grandchildren who enjoy coming down to the Cape to visit them over the summer, get some additional space while they're there visiting. It's just a one level, as I said, 12 by 32 bedroom addition. And the reason why we're here today is because the existing dwelling is non-conforming, it's only 29 feet in the front, where 30 is required, and the way the addition is designed, if you look on the Cedar Street side, there's a small three-foot jog just for aesthetic purposes, it does not create any new non-conformities, it's a slight intensification to an existing non-conformity, and, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I believe in the letter or in the agenda, it says that it's a front and side setback?
Yeah.
If you look at the plan, we are proposing a 17 and a half foot side setback where 15 feet is required.
I noticed that, yeah, I was a little unsure about if you needed side setback relief, I see you're encroaching on the front, but it doesn't appear that you're approaching on the side, that's correct?
Correct, and it's already non-conforming in the front, as I said, so it's not, it isn't a creation of a new non-conformity, it's just a slight intensification on that front side.
Okay, why is it not a new non-conformity to the front side?
Because it's already 29.4 where 30 feet is required, it's already pre-existing non-conforming, Mr. Chair.
It is an increase in the non-conformity.
It is, as I said, yeah.
I ask a question while you're looking at that, Sean, there looks to be either a portico or a stoop in the front of the house, just out of curiosity, how far is the front of that to the lot line?
So, it's not dimensioned on the plan, but it does stick out farther than the proposed addition.
It does. And it's not any enclosed?
It's not, it's an open stairway under 780 CMR of the Mass Building Code, that landing on its own has to be at least 36 inches in that running direction, so if you take that and the first tread, you're about four foot, maybe four foot two off...
That's what I saw, I drove by it the other day.
Yeah.
Small step.
What we're proposing is actually three foot 10, so it's actually less than what's currently there now.
Okay, some reason I'm not seeing your site plan, you have a site plan here, here we go.
Yes.
Where is it? I see a septic plan, is there no...
That is where the site plan is, I think, Sean.
Where am I, oh, I see it up the top here, is this only a half a page or is it a full page?
There's a full page, the lower part of the page has the site...
I see that right here, okay, so, the 10 foot one on the left-hand side of this plan, that you're 10 foot one off that to this little bump out there, what is that?
That's pre-existing non-conforming, that's as is, we're not touching anything on that.
Okay, that's fine, all right, so, you're saying that... What's the current 29.4, all right, you're, well... You don't have a 30-foot setback in that corner, do you have a 30-foot setback on the side that you want to put the bump out in the front? Looks like that house is cocked to the street, looks like somebody made a mistake when they laid it out is what they did.
So, Sean, with the bedroom addition, they're looking to bring it as close as 26.8 feet?
Yeah, I see that right there. Why can't you move that back to the front of the house?
Would have to push the whole thing back, I mean, it's, so if I could...
Are you putting a new septic system in?
We are, yes.
You know by putting a septic system in the backyard, it'll prevent you from ever doing any addition in the backyard, that's where you can build things, you can't build things in the front yards.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this has been before conservation and the Health Department, they've all been approved. We are aware of all of the... We are aware of all, all of those limitations, but we, it, it does require a brand septic system, what's there now is not going to be adequate, uh, just because of its age, so this is, this is pretty much where the addition has to go. We don't have too many options here. We are twenty-nine foot four on the west side of this house right now, so as far as the front yard setback is concerned, it's pre-existing non-conforming. There's not a dimension to the front stoop. Um, however, if, if it were dimensioned, it would be less than twenty-six point eight. So, uh, arguably, i- it's, it's not intensifying, um, the, the existing non-conformity, it's, but, but we are less than thirty, so it, it, it is, it is enlarging the structure within the non-conforming setback.
How would you say that it's not increasing the non-conformity, it's moving closer to the street with a new structure?
Right, so it's an intensification, however, the dimension from the street line to that stoop is less than twenty-six point eight feet, is my point.
The front stoop?
Steps don't.
We don't, we don't count steps.
No count, okay.
So, right now, you have a, uh, one, two, three. You've got three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms too.
And you're taking the study, which was a former bed, uh, you're taking the former bedroom and converting that to a study?
That's correct, and that's going to be opened up into that living space.
What are the dimensions of the new bedrooms on the left-hand side?
What was that?
What are the dimensions of the bedrooms that you propose to build on the left side of the house?
Twelve by sixteen. Actually, a little less than that, they're actually twelve by fourteen when you take the closets away.
Well, couldn't you make that bedroom in the front two feet smaller and have a twelve by twelve bedroom, and then you wouldn't need that front setback relief?
And we'd still have to these four.
I think we'd still need it. Even, even if it's in line with the house, it's still not thirty feet, so it's still, it, it would still be a slight intensification. So, by adding that little jog, it, it allows Mr. and Mrs. Mahoney to do what, what they want to do, and it's a very, um, I, 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 I feel as though it's a very, um, small request, yeah.
Well, the, the, the problem that we have is, we generally don't give front setback relief unless there's a real compelling reason to do so. I won't speak for the other board members, but it's pretty much been the history of the board. And, you know, you're asking to build a bedroom out in here, uh, you know, and you say it's twenty-six eight, so what is the distance to the corner of the building right now as it exists? You don't have that mark. You've got twenty-nine four on one corner, and then you've got twenty-six eight to your proposed corner, but you don't have what the distances to the existing other corner.
I, I can tell you what that is.
Looks like it butts out three feet, ten inches.
Pretty simple calculation.
Looks like thirty-one, I'm scaling it right now, it's thirty-one feet.
Well, it looks like, yeah, I mean, I'm, I see the way Cedar Street's running, and it looks like you're gaining setback, because the house doesn't look square to the street, and it looks like it runs away on that side. So, it looks like, at least in my opinion, that you meet, or you're, you're real close to thirty feet.
If, if, yeah, if the front line of the addition, if that was a much smaller bedroom and the front line of the addition was the same as the rest of the front of the house, um, I don't believe they'd need any relief.
They may not.
So, I, I, I do have thirty-one feet, so if we did, would you be, would you be satisfied with a one-foot jog, Mr. Chair? Cause that would put us at thirty feet, which is the required setback on that corner, and it'll still allow the aesthetic.
You don't need it at that point, you don't.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you need relief from this board if you can meet thirty feet.
Yep.
I think you can do that as a matter of right, you're not looking for side setback relief, you wouldn't be looking for front or rear. So, if you cut that off, you can just walk in and get your building permit, which I think would be easier than trying to convince us to give you a foot, cause we don't, unless other board members want to chime in and tell me that they're comfortable with this, but I'm not real comfortable with front setback relief, and this can be, a small portion of this can be removed and we can conform.
If you did the one-foot jog, he would be at the thirty feet, cause he's sitting back one foot off of there, so if you did a one-foot jog, he wouldn't need us.
He can still get a foot, yeah, yeah.
Well, if he comes back with a site plan that says that he's at thirty feet or more with that jog out there, he doesn't have to come back to us, he can go right into the building inspector's office. So, what I'd do is I'd go to your engineer, who's your engineer, Don Meyer?
Yeah.
Why don't you go see him?
He's actually going to put in half.
And why don't you cut that down a little bit, so you're at thirty feet, and then just walk into the building commissioner's office with a submitted building permit application, I think he'll just grant it to you.
Just go wider and you got to get your square footage back, you have, you have the side setback.
Right, right.
You do have that option too, you need to be fifteen off that side, so, you know, maybe you want to consider going a little bit wider on that to make up for the length.
You'll have more of a square room as well, yeah, that'd be a better option.
Yeah.
And you don't need us, you're also.
For that, I'm happy to do that.
Feet to work on on that side.
Let me just check that, oh, Clyde, you guys okay? Okay, I think it's a good, more square footage when it's all said and done.
How much further can it go out on the side?
Two and a half.
You get two and a half feet. By, by the whole distance of the built, the whole length of the building, so you'd actually gain more square footage by, by widening and shortening and widening, correct.
A little more than one foot forward and probably two and a half feet to the side. You have to, you had to maintain fifteen feet from the side, thirty feet from the street.
Because what, as David said, we were looking at the aesthetic point of it, instead of looking like.
Right, right, cause it, it would still be budding out, so you could still have that different roof line, yeah.
You okay with that?
And you do have room to go a little higher if you want to try to keep the same slope?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, is that what, is that what you want to do?
If, if that's what the board's okay with, I think we'd be more than satisfied with that.
Then what you're going to need is you're going to need to request to withdraw your petition without prejudice, and we'll vote on that, and I'm sure we'll allow you to withdraw it without prejudice, and if you need to come back to us, you would need to submit a new application.
So, if I could, Mr. Chair, would you and the board be opposed to requesting a continuation until we speak to the building commissioner?
We would have to put you on a January twelfth, Dolores, do we have room on January twelfth?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, it's January twelfth.
So, if you want to sign an extension, uh, we could put you over to the January twelfth hearing, that's the earliest we can get you in.
Yeah, sure, if, after I speak to Mr. Grills, if he's, if he's, if he's okay with this, and he doesn't have any, any other issues, then we'll just withdraw.
You can do that, okay, we can continue with you. I would suggest to you, before you go see Mark, that you have a brand-new site plan drawn up, so he sees it exactly on the ground with Don's stamp on it.
Agreed.
Okay?
Okay.
Alright, so, wait, Dolores, if we could get them to sign a, uh, an extension agreement, and we'll carry them over to January twelfth, if during that time, you don't need any relief, you can just send a letter into us requesting that you want to withdraw your petition without prejudice, and we can approve it administratively.
Alright, that sounds excellent, thank you all.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thanks a lot, have a good night, good luck.
You're awesome.
Alright, our next petition is petition four nine eight five, Catherine and John Nickandros, I, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Nickandros, is that correct? Okay, uh, the property address is fourteen Cadet Lane, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R twenty-five zoning district, and the applicant seeks a special permit per one oh four point three point two subsection two to construct a twenty-six, twenty-four by twenty-six addition, to include an increase in height and/or variance from front setback relief. Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good evening, thank you.
Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Um, I'm Catherine Nickandros, fourteen Cadet Lane.
Okay.
I'm Nickandros, fourteen Cadet Lane.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm Kieran Healy of the BSC Group, um, the surveyor on this particular project.
Good evening, Mr. Healy. Will you be, uh, presenting the petition tonight for them?
I will not be presenting the presentation tonight, I'll do the presentation tonight, but I would like to make a statement before we start.
Okay.
And that is that, on the original plans that were submitted, I had, uh, erroneously identified the addition to the building as a two-car garage with living space overhead.
Okay.
Reason being is I've got five of those going at this particular moment, and this particular project does not have a garage, it's got living space on the first floor and living space on the second floor. Um, on the, uh, the, um, advertisement to the public, I believe it was identified correctly, I don't believe anybody would be, um, unduly, uh, put out by the fact that something came in, but I think before it got into the public eye, it was corrected, and I'm just here if the board has any particular questions about that item.
No, I, I think we're good on that, that, uh, that was actually brought to my attention a couple of days ago. We can give you less than what you want, but we can't give you more than what you want without a legal advertisement, and I don't think you're asking for more by what you're asking for, so it's consistent, and I think we can go forward tonight.
Correct, the size of the project is exactly the same.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. So, it is a twenty-four by twenty-six addition?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're asking for here tonight. Uh, and you need front setback relief?
Um, we are asking for a special permit due to the height of the addition. Um, the current home is a single-story ranch that we, that we had built for summer weekends. My husband and I, uh, always planned to retire. This home, over the last twenty years, we have determined that a garage is not what we need, that we need some more living space, we don't have an office or desk, desk space, we don't have, um, a, a family room or a playroom for when our twenty-year-old children eventually have families. I don't have a laundry facility, and we don't have a full-size master bathroom.
Okay.
And we would like to remain as a single floor for major space, and the height is required to accommodate, um, a special, an extra space for a family room, playroom possibly for future grandchildren, um, all open with a small powder room on the second floor. Um, we, we understand that this is asking for special permission to build this, but we would also like to make it clear, Mr. Chairman, that we love this home, um, we built it in two thousand two. As a matter of fact, Mr. Igo, I do believe you sat on the zoning board in two thousand two.
Correct, I remember that.
And heard our.
A bit of an odd petition, as I recall at the time, yeah.
Yes, sir, it was, uh, about the addition of the front porch.
Yeah.
Yes, and we have, we love this location, we love this town, we would very much like to stay here, um, we love having access to the beach where the mooring is, we simply need the space for full-time living, and we'd like to spend the rest of our lives in this house. Um, we did consider larger homes in other areas of the Cape, but we couldn't find anything that was affordable, we couldn't find anything that even met the criteria of what this property has given us for the last twenty years, and we would, we would have to leave the Cape if we were not able to have the space that we're asking for, so that's why we're in front of you this evening.
Well, let's see if we, let's see if we can keep you on the Cape.
Okay.
Um, alright.
I, of it, Sean, I just had a couple of questions, what?
I just want to, I, maybe for, and I'm not sure if the board kind of understands this petition or not, there's some history behind this. It came before us, uh, and it was built, if I'm not mistaken, there was, it was accidentally that the porch was added, uh, I think it was inadvertent mistake.
Eleven inches.
Yeah, uh, so they encroached into the front setback, um, I think if you read that decision, I believe David Reed wrote it, um, at any rate, uh, there, there was, at first they thought it was a vacant lot, and then they realized that there was a house there previously, I think the house that was there previously had a porch, the house was constructed, it came in at, uh, less than thirty foot on the setback, uh, we wrestled with this, however, it is a corner lot. I think historically, this board has given some deference to petitioners on corner lots, cause you have two front bet, two front setbacks, so you have to meet thirty-foot setbacks on two sides, and it can be very difficult to fit houses in there. Having said that, we did approve that back in, um, I guess you said it was oh two, maybe?
Yes, it was.
Which was a long time ago, uh, and so, you're, you're here tonight, and you're looking to build a new house, or add, just add the addition, correct?
We are asking to add a two-story addition to the existing structure, yes, sir.
The two-story addition is not higher than thirty-five feet.
It's, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a couple items that might clarify, um, because the house was pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
And any modification of the building height triggers relief. It's not that we need relief for the building height, we're ten feet under what's, or twelve feet under what's required, sorry, allowed for building height, at only twenty-three feet plus, but what it is, is because we're modifying a pre-existing non-conforming building, that's what triggers the requirement for the special permit.
Okay.
We don't, if we need a variance for the street frontage, um, you'll notice one corner of the building is a twenty-nine eight, the reason being is the existing porch is only a twenty-four feet from the street, but just out of an element of caution, it was listed so that we could cover that in the event this board felt that it was required.
Okay, alright, everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Okay, so really, you need front setback relief, cause you're at twenty-nine eight on one of the corners, correct?
Uh, if the board in top said that way, I personally think we don't, but, um, that's for the sport to decide.
I, I would concur with you, I don't think you do.
Yeah.
You don't think, you don't think they need?
That's because of the, the porch is already at twenty-four feet.
Right.
So.
Well, see, some people are of the opinion that when you continue along and build new structures that are still non-conforming, that that's an increase in the non-conformity. Having said that, I don't personally think it prejudices this petition to the extent that I wouldn't support it, because we already have that one. Uh, and given the fact that they are dealing with two front setbacks, I, I think we can give them some deference and some relief on that, but I do think it is a new non-conformity. I don't think you, I don't think you get under the thirty-foot requirement just because you have a porch that's at twenty-four, and you want to build something new that's still less than thirty. But having said that, um, why don't I go to some questions from the board right now? But I think what we can do here is certainly, uh, uh, proceed with a special permit as an extension and alteration of an existing special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, I, I read this is twenty-three feet, eleven or ten inches, whatever it is, um, as far as height goes, which is under the thirty-five.
That's fun, yeah.
I don't see that as a problem.
Nope.
And, uh, you know, I, I personally would interpret this, you know, it's not a question, it's a comment, I wouldn't interpret this as more, more, uh, or an increase or a need for more, um, as far as setback relief, but that's the way I'd look at it. I don't have any.
Well, I think, I think the building commissioner did, so I, well, they have a building permit in hand.
That's correct, it was out of an abundance of caution.
Yeah, but that's okay, that's okay.
It was, they had to come to us anyway because of the non-conformity.
Correct, and we did not want to go through what we went through in two thousand two again. Learned from that experience, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, Dick, do you have any questions?
I, I think they meet, meet any and all criteria that they may need to meet if they may, if they may need it.
Okay, Jay, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, John?
No, I don't have any questions, I have any problem with this.
Okay, how about you, Tim?
No, they're asking for two tenths of an inch on a corner lot, I think we're fine. I feel comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Alright, I really don't have any questions, I understand what you're doing here, and I, I do think you meet the criteria of the bylaw, as I've said now for the third time on this petition, uh, you know, you're dealing with tough setbacks when you're on a corner lot, I don't think you're, uh, making this substantially more non- substantially more non-conforming than what's there now. I think it's going to be a beautiful building when it's done. You're under the thirty-five feet, so we don't have a problem there. And I do think it's keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So, um, if anybody, if there's no questions, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve petition number four nine eight five as requested.
I'll say special permit.
Special permit, yep, okay. And, uh, no conditions?
No conditions.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
John, keep me in the punch.
Okay, John? All right.
Discussion.
Do we have any, uh, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Uh, as you may be aware, um, once it's filed with the town, the, once the decision is filed with the town clerk, twenty days must elapse. That is a technical appeal period. I don't think anybody's going to appeal it. After that, you can come in and see our administrative assistant, Dolores, and she will, uh, give you your special permit. You need to take it over to the registry of deeds and record it, and then just bring a copy back for our records. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Letter I could show there's nobody in the room but, uh, the presenters and the members of the board. There's no audience to ask questions of.
Nice to see you, Mr. Healy.
Take your members.
Thank you.
Do we, Dolores, do we have any other business?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have the meeting minutes from September twenty-second.
I may, I'll move to approve the, uh, meeting minutes for September twenty-second.
You have a second? Hearing a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please by signifying, by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimous. Anything else, Dolores?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much, gang, and, uh, we'll see you at the next meeting.
How are you doing? It's going to be your next meeting, I think, maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there.
All right, thank you, Sean.
See you then. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I missed all this fun.
Yeah.